So, uh, everybody ready? It's here.
Good to go.
Okay, welcome everyone. Welcome from Zoom world to our monthly meeting. Call the meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Mayor Miranda.
Here.
Trustee Early. Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Murphy.
Here.
Hey. Just the Lodo is somewhere. Uh, let's see. I just need to pull up the, uh, so the, uh, the only thing that Michelle sent was the highlights. Is that right, Jeff?
Correct.
Okay, so, and she's not on, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So I'll read the financial highlights from our village accountant. Let's see. Revenue is continuing to increase for parking fees and justice court fines and fees. Letters to residents who have not paid their taxes will go out December 1st, reminding them to pay by January 31st. This is currently less than 20 parcels. I will have financial statements prepared for, excuse me, prepared for December's monthly meeting to show six months of actual revenues and expenses along with my projections for the next six months. I should have the external auditor's draft financial report from May 31st this week. I will review and forward to the board, uh, board's review as well. Mr. Castello will, uh, schedule a presentation as well, either via Zoom or in person with the board choosing the method. And finally FEMA did declare tropical storm, Isaiah's as a FEMA eligible event for Long Island and is working towards approving other counties, including Putnam. Hopefully that means that some of the costs submitted, uh, to New York State for cleanup after that storm as well as Jenner, as well as generator usage will be reimbursed at the seven, at the 75% rate. Okay. Let's see. Now I just lost that, so.
Dave, just on that, her first point about court fees and fines.
Yeah.
I don't know if everybody looked at this month's reports from the court. $19,000 was collected. It's by far the most that was, that's ever been collected in a single month. Um, and that's playing catch-up, plus they've been, um, very diligent in handing out tickets. So people coming in and paying tickets as they get them.
Wow.
So that wasn't, it wasn't just for the month, really. It was for, we're catching up, so it's back. Fine.
Yeah, we get, yeah, part of it gets, is backlog getting cleared up.
Right. Okay. Next we have report police and, uh, Larry is out fighting fire. He's got a different hat on, so. See if we can, uh, go through this quickly. Let's see, monthly report continued. We have, uh, let's see, parking tickets, uh, 103 total number of tickets issued, 119 total number for the year to date, 882. And I guess that's about it for, uh, for his report.
Sorry, sorry Davey had a, there was a page before that total number of calls for service.
Oh, guy, total number of calls for service were 52 and total number for the year were 567. Okay. Uh, next we have, uh, rec commission. Do we have Ruth Ann on or no?
She's, she's under the name of Parker.
Iris and where are we? Hello?
Yep.
Your audio is all garbled.
It looks like she's froze.
You're, you're froze. It's all right. It's stage fright. You'll get over it. No, not coming through Ruth Ann. You look, your, your image is frozen and can hardly make it out. Well, can't make out what you're saying.
Yeah. I guess you'll have to read.
You want us?
What to say? Yeah, no, you'll have to read.
Do you want me to, uh, come back to you? You want us to come back to you? I don't know if that'll help any.
I think she said she wanted us to read or you to read it for her.
Okay. Good interpretation there.
Move on and I'll try to find another beer.
Move on. She'll try another.
Computer. Computer, I think she said.
Okay, all right. Still not, no.
I should saw frozen up.
Hey Steve.
Oh, hi.
So, all right, we'll, uh, we'll go to planning board and we'll come back to you Ruth Ann in a bit. Uh, see, you know, I don't, I'm not sure what you can do. If not, I'll read it for you and you can nod. Well, that doesn't even work because you're frozen. We don't have anything for planning, right?
Correct.
Okay, we have zoning. Current business, the board receives an application for, uh, oh, is Aaron on?
I don't think so.
Aaron is not on.
Okay, uh, current business, the board receives an application for, uh, interpretation and variance for both six fence at 33 Market Street in the B1 district. The interpretation appeal seeks to override the building inspector's judgment that a variance is needed for six foot fence in a B1. New business, Donald McDonald resigned from losing the A. Many thanks to Donald for chairing, uh, the 21 Parsons Street hearing and for his many years of dedicated service to the village. Aaron Wolf will, uh, not continue on the board beyond his current term, which expires at the end of November. Eric Worth has been appointed and he has not yet been appointed, has to go through the board. Eric has stepped up and said he will, uh, he'll take on the role. So I appreciate that. And so we'll make a recommendation, um, when Aaron, uh, when Aaron's term is up. Old business, on October 15th, the board approved a very variance required for for Morris Avenue to build a six-foot fence along the south side of the property where it borders the B1 district. On October 15th, the board approved a resolution drafted by the village attorney, John First, denying an application for construction of a new home at 21 Parsons Street. The work on the application is now complete. Um, and I think that's it for, uh, for the zoning or for the ZBA. Um, I thank, uh, you know, I just want to also thank Donald and Aaron both, uh, both have done a great job. Um, Donald, I don't know how many years Donald's had on the, on the board, but, uh, as chair and then he stepped down and came back and then, just recently chaired, um, when Aaron had to recuse himself. So, uh, he's done a great job and I, I wholly always had confidence in, in Donald and, uh, he's, you know, extremely knowledgeable and did a great job and taking that on for all those years is not an easy task. So, uh, thank you so much, Donald, if you're out there or hope somebody, uh, passes that along. I did send him an email, but, uh, it, you know, it's one of those people we were talking, I think they were talking about volunteerism on the current interviews of candidates last night or, and, uh, this is a person that stepped up and and using his expertise for years. So, thank you and thank Aaron for stepping in and I think you did a great job there and, uh, I will miss you also. Sorry that you're stepping off. Um, okay, so, uh, town of Phillips Town, Bobby on. Lot of people fighting fires.
No, Bobby's on.
Okay. Bob Flaherty, you there, bro?
There you go.
Ruth Ann, how about Ruth Ann is, Roseanne fixed anything? Okay. It's like you, there's Ruth Ann. You're moving Ruth Ann. That's a good sign.
Ruth Ann's lips and Bob's lips are moving, but I don't hear anything.
She's muted.
We're not hearing you, Bob.
Is there a mute button that needs to be hit? Little red mic?
She's not muted, Dave.
Oh, okay.
And for Bob Flaherty, I'm not showing any audio coming in from him, just the video.
He's got the telephone number. That's Bob Flaherty, 914 numbers, Bob.
Well, should be. If he, if that's him on the phone, he needs to unmute his phone.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Works for me.
I just got here. We can adjourn.
All right, um, I'm not sure what we should do here. Uh, what do we got? Historic District Review is, uh, someone from HDRB on?
I'm here.
Hi Sean, how are you?
I'm good. How are you guys?
Good thanks.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. Um, so we, I, I prepared a report and then I also just have a kind of a denim to it. Just talking about our fees. So should I read the report into the record first?
Sure.
Okay, that I do not have printed out, so. So in October, we had a really light month. We met twice with the owners of four Morris Avenue. Uh, the first meeting was for an application for some replacement windows. Uh, the materials that they, the proposed replacement materials were not compliant with our design standards, so they have rescinded the application. And we're going to meet with them again in a workshop session, actually tomorrow. Um, the second meeting, the second application was for their perimeter fence, which you spoke about, um, which we approved.
Sean, which, which addresses are, where is four?
Four is the, is the gray house between the library and Whistling Willies. Formerly the orange house.
All right, gotcha. Yep.
So there, the reason why they needed the, um, the reason why they were asking for the taller fence was because of that they, they abut the parking lot on the, you know, the Whistling Willie side. For our November meeting, which will be tomorrow night, we're meeting with some folks from Wells Fargo about some changes to their exterior lighting fixtures, which are, um, required for updated security protocol, um, for the bank. But that also seems to be a pretty easy application. Um, in board business, we have delivered the first, um, section of the text for the updated design standards over to the graphic designer, Christian, and she is going to start working on the first design draft for us to review. Um, and the second item is what I want to talk to you guys about, which, uh, is just following up on our discussion that we had in September about the public hearing fees. And we have discussed them amongst ourselves and we've attached a memo for you guys to review. I don't know whether you've had a chance to review it, so I will just go through it, but basically our goal, uh, and I think the goal of the trustees, we want to just make sure that the public awareness of our routine public hearings is, um, as sort of wide-reaching as we can get it to be. So, um, part of what we want to do is to include advertising, in the Highland Current, in addition to the required advertising in the PCNR. That is, the PCNR is the paper of record, so we actually, so we have to advertise twice, um, before a public hearing, but those advertisements appear in the legal notices, which are not necessarily the most user-friendly, um, placement in the paper. Um, so I spoke with the ad desk at the Highland Current and we, um, discussed getting, placing a single display ad prior to any public hearings, um, in the current. So as a result, we discussed our fees to sort of accommodate that and how to make it work and what our board is proposing, um, is, is kind of a couple of steps. The first is that we want to increase our application fee for all applications from $30 to $40. Uh, we haven't had a fee increase in about five years, um, and we still feel like that's pretty affordable for most applications. Um, and then in doing so, we also actually want to decrease the public hearing fee from $80 down to $40. Um, we would advertise twice in the PCNR as required, and then we would also advertise once in the Highland Current on the Friday before the public hearing. Our public hearings are almost always on Wednesdays, um, and very occasionally Thursdays. So I spoke, um, we, we looked through the records of how many public hearings we had, um, over the past couple of years to try to get an idea of, um, you know, what those fees would end up being and outside of this sort of larger projects that uh, require an escrow with our board, we really don't have that many public hearings. Um, so even though we will be reducing the fee from $80 down to $40, we feel that by increasing the fees for all of the other applications, we won't just break even, we'll actually be able to accommodate the additional advertising, um, and still have a, a cushion. We were, we were concerned that if we just put all of the advertising fees on to the back of the applicant, it would be minimally around $150 for those types of applications, uh, which we feel is a little onerous. And we didn't want to do anything that would discourage compliance with our process and particularly with public hearings. Um, and then lastly, if there's any projects that come before us, which are the sort of larger projects that do require an escrow account, um, the, all of the advertising fees would just be built back to that account at cost. Because of the two, uh, I mean, because of the changes in the secret law, it, it's unlikely that we're going to be lead agency on one of those larger projects again. So it's probably not something that we're going to have to even deal with, but just of the three type one projects that we dealt with most recently, um, two of them were for income generating properties. So we feel, you know, having to pay for this, um, that public hearing advertising is just a business expense. Um, so we think that this is the fairest solution, uh, to kind of spread the costs around for all the applications. Um, I don't know what it takes on your end to approve the change in fees. I don't know if it needs to be a resolution or if we need to vote on it first. I think it's just something that, um, you guys do yourselves.
Sean, what, what triggers the escrow account?
I'm sorry?
What triggers the escrow account?
So it was in, in recent memory, the only projects that have required the escrow account were three, uh, three of those, uh, seeker type one projects that required us to hire consultants acting on behalf of the village. So that was, uh, one 26 Main Street, uh, 33 to 35 Market Street and 20 the Boulevard. So it would basically be any, and again, and I have been told many, many times what the new law is and could not relay it back to you. Maybe Kathleen can, but there is, there has been a change in the seeker review process, which, um, which would, which would basically decrease the likelihood that our, that our board would ever be the lead agency on, uh, on another, um, secret project. It would be pretty rare that it wouldn't be, um, planning, that, that the planning board wouldn't be the lead agency. So our, uh, needing an escrow account for one of those projects is, is not likely.
Yeah, and all the time that I have sat on the board, there were, there were no escrow accounts related to HDRB other than the seeker accounts and the bar with the changes in the state seeker law, the bar for historic preservation has been raised, um, quite high, so it's very unlikely that the HDRB will be the lead agency under the current configuration of the law. More likely that it will be the planning board and of course you already have escrow, um, procedure in place in the ordinance for, for that process.
So chapter 57 is the chapter that, uh, governs, uh, reimbursement of, uh, professional consultants fees. The trigger there is any board that needs to, uh, engage the services of a professional, whether that be a lawyer, um, an engineer, um, a surveyor or whatever. That is when the, um, escrow comes into play. That's when it's established. Sean, I have a question on the numbers. Uh, so, right now it's a 30 to going to 40 and 80 going to 40. So I'm afraid I don't see how the numbers, uh, end up bringing in more money versus costing more money. I, I have no idea what the cost is for the publication of the, um, for the advertising of the hearings.
The advertising for the hearings, uh, is, it's about, but between the, uh, two legal notices and add in the Highland Current and there's a filing fee as well that Jeff prepares, it would be around $150. A little less, actually. I think it's like $125 altogether. So.
Yeah, so.
But I'm sorry, so the reason why, the reason how it all kind of works out is just because we actually do have few, it, over the course of general business, we do end up having very few public hearings over in it, within a year, and we have many, many more, um, applications that come in that don't require a public hearing. The last kind of normal year that I looked at, obviously this is not a normal year, but the last normal year that I looked at, there were only a three public hearings for in, in the entire year. Other than these three projects that we were dealing with, which had seeker hearings.
Okay, so, so from the numbers that you just, uh, gave us, it's $150 for, um, uh, advertisements and legal notices of which the village would recover, um, the $40 base fee and the $40 for, um, public hearing. So the village loses then $70 for anything that goes to a public hearing.
Yes, the, our, the, the cost of the, of advertising those public hearings would come out of the other fees that we receive for other applications. Our application fees, when we charge an application fee, the money, we, our, our board doesn't really operate with any sort of expenses to speak of. The only other, um, the only other resource that we ever tap into is John First and at the time that we consult with him, doesn't come out of our budget. It comes out of the, as far as I know, comes out of the village's general budget. So we're generating money that's coming in for these applications and we don't really have anything to spend it on. And so, so we feel that the little bit of money that we do bring in can be spent towards advertising these public hearings or subsidizing the advertising of our public hearings because it's a priority of our board to make sure that those hearings are well advertised and well attended.
So in, in, in looking at the numbers, we lose $70, the village loses $70 for every public hearing. And the HDRB generates $10 for every application, excluding those applications that require a public hearing. And yet the HDRB, uh, uh, charges the village through any consultations with John First. It looks to me like we're losing money.
Um, I don't, I, I think ultimately we aren't going to be losing money. I, I have a, a, a more specific rubric of the year that I reviewed, which I can send over to you. Just taking into account the number of applications that we had and the number of public hearings that we had. I could compare that to the amount of money that we've generated, um, in legal fees with John First's office. I don't know what that number is because it, again, because it's not part, part of our budget, but I can certainly look into that.
I appreciate that, if you would please.
Sean, do you have, do you have a, a kind of a, a guesstimate on how many applications you do do in a year?
Uh, sure, you know, let me actually just pull it up because that I don't want to be giving you, uh, guesses. So in the, so the last, uh, kind, again, so the last sort of normal year that I looked at was 2017 to 2018. We had 30 applications. And then in addition to that, we held two public hearings. So we generated $1,060 in fees. For, for that, 30, so 30 applications at $30 apiece and two public hearings at $80 apiece. Under our sort of new model that we're proposing, if we increase the general application to $40 and decrease the public hearing fee to $40, then using those numbers, we would have generated $1,280 in fees, uh, in incoming fees, and we would have had to have paid out about $236 in advertising fees. So our, our profit would have been 1,044, um, compared to the, uh, that compared to what we actually did, which was, uh, you know, $1,060 in incoming fees, paying out $140 in advertising, our profit was 920.
It would be interesting to see what the legal fees add up to.
I think, I mean, I don't think that we're going to, I, I don't know with the legal fees or I can't imagine that we're going to cover them. John can work for two hours and that's going to blow us out of the water.
And we also, I agree. Also make, um, make note that we don't, the HDRB doesn't contact the village attorney without contacting the mayor first. So we're not, there's not willy-nilly consultation. I guess, I guess.
Suggesting that.
Another way to look at this is, you know, you all refer to the village attorney. What, what income are you generating? We, we are, we are incoming, we are generating an income to offset the expense. What we're trying to accomplish here and what I don't want us to lose sight of is, is greater public access to, to process. Um, and we, we believe that we found a way to make the numbers work and it feels, it feels a little bit penny wise, pound foolish, um, when we're not, you're not losing, you're not in actuality losing income on an application. What we're saying is you're spreading the cost of the advertising across multiple applications rather than raising the price of a public fee and potentially, one of the things we worry about greatly is people feeling as if the process is so onerous, either from a process standpoint or financial standpoint, that they don't comply, that they don't want to participate in the process as they should. Um, and so we, we want to reduce as many, as many obstacles as we can to participating, to, to applying and also expand as much as we can, the public knowledge about these hearings happening. Is that a fair assessment, Sean?
Yes, I agree. I mean, I think that it's, again, it's our, our board's goal is to increase public participation with our work and this is one way that we can do that.
I'm curious to know, um, aren't, aren't some of the legal fees, uh, your consultation fees to John First, aren't some of those fees covered by the escrow?
We haven't actually used John First's act, John First's, um, consultation since we had a seeker application. As far as I know, there, there, there may be some element. I think that we did ask him to clarify the changes in the seeker law, but we don't normally need to consult John First. We did need to consult John First, of course, as Marie pointed out earlier, another aspect of the village code allows for the collection of an escrow. We're talking about workaday applications here, which is the vast majority of what we see before us, windows, fences, et cetera. Um, and then the periodic new construction, public hearing or, um, modify it into a structure that requires public hearing. We, we, I mean, and I would say, if I pull rough numbers out of my head, we see maybe in a normal year, four or five applications in a month and maybe three public hearings in a year. That, those numbers have dropped dramatically across all the boards. Since people caught up from COVID, all of the board's activity has dropped off. So it's really hard to say that this year represents a normal year, but I've been on the board. that this year represents a normal year, but I've been on the board for, I hate to say this, but almost fifteen years and our normal activity is five to seven applications a night and about three public hearings a year. See this, when, when when we began reviewing under seeker on the advice of John First, that process expanded greatly, but that is not now normal activity of the board. Because of New York state law changes.
I I I see it if it's two, three, or if it's even if it's four, we're losing two hundred dollars and I I can see easily making that up with ten dollars. I I don't, that neither's gonna pay for John's. If we needed to use John extensively and as Lynn brought up, um, there would be an escrow and that would pay for John unless it was um, depending on what we need to use them for, but that's two hundred dollars an hour. So I don't think we're gonna charge people to actually make up for John's costs, are we? But I don't think that's what it's all about.
No, and again, and as Kathleen said, again, we, the the, any application-specific costs that required consultation, we would, we would charge back to the applicant. She's, she's saying and I agree that we speak to John about our general business. I mean, maybe once a year, if that.
And we certainly, by your own guidance, talk to the mayor before we call the village attorney. I mean, that's, that's your own guidance to us as standing board members is the process is, we talk to the clerk and the mayor before we call the village attorney.
So let me ask the question for the design standards that you're working on. Will that require consultation with John?
It may.
That has nothing to do with the.
We have a separate budget. We have a separate, we have a separate budget for that. That was laid out in that project's budget. I'm not sure what what the resistance. I'm having a hard time understanding what the resistance is here.
So my, my question was, I'll go back again, the thirty dollars to forty dollars. I understand the eighty dollars, which is now a hundred and, sorry, the eighty dollars now for a public hearing. The cost is now a hundred and fifty dollars. So the village is.
Sorry, I was saying, I I I'm sorry, it was the the costs, if we were to charge an applicant to cover the cost of all of the advertising, the public hearing fee would be a hundred and twenty dollars or a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Plus, they'd already be paying this thirty-dollar application fee. So I was saying it would be the total. You're sort of all in to apply to our board. If you needed a public hearing, it would be around a hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, and we're charging them eighty dollars. The proposal is to charge them eighty dollars for a public hearing. So the village loses seventy dollars on each public hearing.
But you're also increasing your income on normal applications, which again by far and away is the majority of our work. So you may, you may be reducing it on three applications a year, but you're raising it slightly on the workaday applications. And so the theory is that you balance the numbers and you spread the cost across the application.
Okay.
Across the applications in a year.
So I'll look forward to Sean's data on.
Does anyone else have a problem with this? Because I have no.
I'm wondering, uh, why should there be a line in in some of these boards budgets for legal referrals? I mean, why, why is there not a a legal line for such things that they may need to consult with John?
That's an excellent question, Fran. There never has been in all the time that I've sat on.
And I don't, I don't know whether there should be or shouldn't be, and Michelle's not on to ask her for uh but and then they could work it for their budget. But I, I, I'm a little uncomfortable with passing off um, fees.
Right, right now, if we're gonna go with math and we're gonna, how can, how can we possibly be paying right now? If only three come in at eighty dollars and we read and we, we're at thirty dollars. There's no complaints up to this time about that and that certainly doesn't pay for anything.
Well, you may remember that the last time we had this discussion, the request was or the consideration was for the H D R B to reevaluate their fee structure.
Right, which.
And and, right, and so I'm just questioning whether the, they're, they've re- they've adjusted their fee schedule, but at the same time have increased the cost for public hearings. And all I'm asking is to take a look at the data that Sean.
I feel like that's micromanaging. Why ask them to do it? We should have just done it if we're not gonna believe with five members of their board, we asked them to do. I mean, they aren't capable of looking at the numbers and saying we're gonna break even or actually make more money.
So Sean has the data. What's the problem? Just send the data.
Problem is we're micromanaging.
And you're asking me to deduct legal expenses that have never been our responsibility to pay.
I'm not, I'm not asking that, Sean. I'm just, you you said you had the data from, I think it was two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen.
I will, I will point out, I will point out as one of the senior members of the H D R B, I've been on this board for years, nearly fifteen. For a number of years, when I prepared the budget for this board, I went to extensive effort to document what we had uh in legal fees and what had been paid on our behalf. I was told after two years of spending a great deal of time doing that, that this was not my concern. That this came out of village trustees and I should stop attempting to document the amount of hours, which by the way, we're not excessive. Go back to my previous reports. I'm happy to pull them. I have them all in a file to show you how many times we consulted the village attorney and for what purpose. To great, to great detail, I provided those reports and I was told not to provide them anymore. So I'm not sure where this um, unease emanates um, to believe that we are constantly consulting the village attorney. It doesn't.
Can I break, can I break in here as a board member? I'm, I'm really, can you guys hear me? I'm really concerned about this conversation. Is this the value of the board?
Wait, 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 wait. Jen, 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 not, not public comment right now. We're talking to H D R B.
But you're talking about, what about?
No, no, we can't do this. We have, we have to, we have to, have to go.
What about when, Dave, when we consult an attorney?
Sorry, we are not, no, we're not doing this. We're talking to H D R B right now. Public hearing, you wanna come?
This is a concerning conversation. I'm following.
That in public comment, but we can't have people popping in whenever they'd like to and and commenting on that. We just can't do that. Those just get out of control. We have to stop. We can't do that. I'm sorry.
I don't know how our fees compare to the other boards. I feel as though it is it it is perfectly reasonable for us to increase our application fee from thirty dollars to forty dollars. And I think our motivation for doing such is so that that extra cushion that we generate over the course of the year will allow us to increase our advertising for other applications. If if it is of such a concern among the trustees, we can maintain our eighty-dollar public hearing fee in addition to our newly established forty-dollar application fee. And then it'll only be that little sliver for the Highlands Current that will just have to come out, that will not be accounted for on a public hearing by public hearing basis, but will have to come out of our budget. I just think that if you're talking about you know, forty dollars plus eighty dollars and now you're up to a hundred and twenty dollars, we're, we're getting to a point where we could see people being discouraged to participate in the process and and that's, that's contrary to our mission as a board. We shouldn't, we shouldn't decrease our ability to reach out to the public and alert them to the activities that we're doing. For something to even rise to the occasion of a public hearing, and obviously it needs to be something that is of a significant size that there's public interest. So it's large developments, it's, you know, redevelop, it's, it's rebuilding something uh that needs to be demolished to the degree that it is a reconstruction and not just a repair. It's, you know, the new house that's going up on Paulding Avenue. They're rare, they're rare occasions that we have them. But all we want to do is just make sure that when we do have them, people are aware that it's occurring and it's advertised in it. Truthfully, if I can be perfectly honest, I would prefer to not have to advertise in the P C N R at all because I think that's a huge waste of money. But legally, we're required to do it. If we could come to some sort of an agreement with Doug Cunningham and the people there that they would give us a display ad instead of a legal notice, then that could be something that we pursue. But nobody reads the legal notices. So it's, 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 it's an absolute waste of money and it's just some sort of legal requirement that we're burdened with. So that, that's how I stand on the issue. It sounds like it's, it sounds like it's one versus one with three members of your board without comment. So I can, I can provide more information. I I can analyze it in a different way, but I find this to just be a pretty mild request and I'm I I just don't really know what else it is that I I I, if you can tell me how to further our, our cause, I will, uh, I will do it.
Oh, I I I'm totally for it. Um, you know, I guess, I guess it's, um, doesn't have to be done right away. Uh, I I just think it's micromanaging. I don't believe in it. We've asked you to do something, you've done it and now we're questioning it. So I I, you know, I don't I, you know, I I feel comfortable and confident in the intelligence and the uh financial abilities of your board to come up with something where you said this balances out or actually brings in more. So um, if Marie's not happy with that, you know, that's uh, I I I don't understand it, but uh that's fine. If you can send what whatever, whatever information you have, go back fifty years, maybe, that would be great. Uh, kidding. Um, but anyway, yeah, send that and uh, if you could make the recommendation um, uh, for our next meeting. Um, if we can get the information, uh, you know, we'll, we'll vote on it.
Right, I appreciate your time.
Appreciate yours. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your work, Sean.
What's up?
Okay.
Thanks for your work, Sean.
Okay, hi.
Hey, can you hear me this time?
There you are.
Yes.
It was the kitchen.
Third time.
Oh, man.
Now I'm on my phone. So we want to thank uh Mayor Morandi for um interviewing and approving, and you're approving Trevor Knight as the new member of the board commission. I think he's gonna be a great addition. He has a lot of experience and enthusiasm. Um, we, uh, first thing on the um notes is the lighting of the bandstand in the waterfront. I'm talking, I'm talking, talking, talked to Peter Padala and Bugsy. Um, we still want to put a light on the flag and Bugsy and I have talked about the timers at the waterfront. Um, meeting to be looked at. So hopefully Peter will be giving me a call soon and Bugsy and Peter and I, and maybe Steve Etta will go down and look at the lighting situation and the timers. Um, we've had on a budget, the painting of the bandstand. Um, Jeff and I have talked about the sheriff's department. And, you know, that's a catch as catch can kind of situation. So at our last meeting, um, the commission said, yes, we'll continue to try to get the sheriff's department, but if not, um, on March fir- first, we'd go out to bid for painting and hopefully have the bandstand painted by May. Um, it is really in need of the painting and I don't think, and the commission doesn't think we should wait any longer.
Is there much, is there a carpentry work that also needs to be done?
Some filler. Yeah, there's some filler that has to be put in.
Not to the point where you need carpenters.
Um, I don't think so.
Okay.
Just filler.
Okay.
You know, um, we reviewed the um recreation properties when we're going through this and this first thing on Mayor's Park about the parking happened, our discussion happened before um, the tryout, but the commission felt that parking should be considered for Mayor's Park. Uh, both Steve Etta and John Morandi, who worked on building the Mayor's Park area and the softball field and all that, feel that that would probably be a good use. It's not being used for much, as long as it was away from the ball field. Uh, the commission thinks that it might be a good idea for the use of the space. But again, that's up to you. We're just giving you our feedback. Uh, Mayor's Park Pavilion, things just aren't getting used down there. Um, we thought about pursuing with the local scouts because of the COVID and needing to be spread out and who knows how long that's gonna be last. Um, that we approached the scouts, both the boy scouts and the girl scouts in town about consider using the pavilion area for scouting activities. Um, since sometimes those can be two or three hours long, maybe we consider them being able to use one of the bathrooms and I'm having them responsible for cleanup of the area. I think, you know, it's nice to see people down there doing things, but I think we have to go out, we have to reach out to them because they're not reaching out to us to use the facilities. So I know that needs your approval to do that. So any comments?
No, I think uh, like, I agree. It'd be nice to see it used and that's a good purpose, so.
Yeah. Well, I know there are gonna be some third graders down at the basketball courts on Sunday mornings now, so that's nice to see. But that's just, you know, less, just a local group, about ten kids. Um, so is that something we want, do you want me to pursue that with the scouts?
I personally think it's fine. Any, anyone else comments, board?
I think it's an excellent idea for the, for the scouts to use the park. Um, I mean, I'm, I love girl scouting and boy scouting. I always was one and um, I think it's important in this day and age that um scouts get out and that they're spending time outside, even if it's cold. You know, we certainly. So I think it would, it's a great use of the park and it's good for scouting too.
Yeah. So um, I'll, I'll direct draft up a letter to the two, you know, scout groups um, and send out some information and see if they're interested in it and I'll send a copy along to the mayor um, with that, if that's everybody's approval.
I think also if there's any other organizations that are village organizations during this COVID uh that we're in, um, that, you know, we should also offer it, you know, it's, it's some facility we have and it would be good to offer that, you know, especially now. Um, and I don't, we should charge the fee if they were, if they were, you know, uh, not for profits.
Yeah, the, the issue comes of needing to use the bathrooms. You know, it's hard to have you know, twenty little kids for two or three hours and not have a bathroom open to them.
Right.
So, that's.
What do we do about sanitizing the the restrooms after they're finished?
They would have to do that themselves. They would have to understand that cleaning and cleanup of the bathrooms would be their responsibility.
And and sanitizing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure that they would be very, I mean, I don't know, I would just have to approach them and see if there's like, does anyone know of any other group um, that we could discuss this with, that would be fine. Um, the commission will be decorating the bandstand on November twenty-first with the twenty-second as a rain date. Um, we're gonna be lighting everything up. I mean, putting everything up except for the tree because we don't get that until a little bit later. Um, the, the bandstand, with the exception of the tree, will be lit beginning on Thanksgiving Day and remain lit until after the holidays. We did purchase some artificial gunland, so that's actually gonna make putting things together a lot's easier. Um, Santa's visit. Um, you know, in the past, we've had Santa visit in the early evening. We've had music, we've had hot chocolate and cookies and candy canes, and that's not gonna be possible. So uh, we've worked with the fire department to have a drive-by Santa visit. Uh, the fire department will come down with Santa. Uh, the kids who can drive by, just like they did for trunk of treats, you know, and get a candy cane. And children will also be able to drop off letters to Santa. Those that include Phillips Town addresses will receive a response from one of Santa's elves. This is gonna be a real challenging, our first season with COVID. So we were trying to think of ways to really you know, bump up the Christmas thing for kids and would then send them all a little response from Santa in regards to their request. Um, the rate, uh, let's see.
We're saying, what's gonna be? What time are you guys gonna start decorating?
I haven't, we haven't decided yet. We usually do it pretty good, but I'll, I'll definitely send something out to Jeff so we can, we can send out a blast to see if anybody wants to help.
Okay, definitely. That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
It's better so people get it on their calendar.
Right, okay. Um, we usually start around, I'll, I'll call you tomorrow, Jeff.
I won't be there. We're closed tomorrow.
Oh, yeah, it's Veterans Day.
Yes.
I will email you and when you get there on Thursday, it'll be, how's that?
Okay, that works.
Um, the rain, we're doing it and at three-thirty, the Santa visit at three-thirty. So it's still daylight, you know. It won't be too crazy, hopefully, and we can have a nice time. Uh, whenever day we do Santa, that's when the tree will be lit and it will stay lit, you know, till after the holidays. The la- last thing on our discussion was uh, ticketed events and what months they should be allowed, considering the recent fall issues with traffic, parking and congestion. Uh, we know this is up to the trustees to decide what months they want to have ticketed events. Um, but we're but we, we, we realize that from listening. but we, we realize that from listening to village neighbors, what a challenge it has been. And if we had had a ticketed event, which of course COVID says we can't, but even if we did have one this fall, I think things would have been horrendous, just to put it mildly. So I think we're going to bring that up to you. We, the only thing we have right now that's on the table is the Wine and Food Festival for next summer. But that's a summertime event. So I just think discussion has to happen about what months we will allow for ticket events at Mayor's Park.
I would agree with you on the, on the month, especially like October, if we had anything. And if the boats are coming in and visitations, what, as high as it is for hiking, it would, it would just, it would be insane.
You know, I live right here in the village and my, my viewpoint of weekends is in the state of home. I get out of town and don't come back until dark.
Even that's getting a little changing. All right. Thank you, Wuzan.
Okay, thank you. Talk to you soon.
Thanks for that.
I think we're to, back to Bobby, and I think I saw his face before. Bob?
Yeah, can you guys hear me now?
Very.
Yep. All right. Sorry. Yeah, a couple has, I'll give you a brief report. I know we're going a little bit late here already. So as you know, the town hall has been, we've been working on it for over a year. There was a lot of time over the summer that a lot of work has not got accomplished, but the things have really picked up in the last several weeks and months. So things are moving really good. We, we look, we had a meeting here today. I think we'd be pretty optimistic if we can get in there before February timeframe, to be quite honest, maybe even March, but we'll see how that goes. But things are looking good there. The work they're doing is nice. It's just taking a little bit longer than anyone anticipated. We had many discussions with the residents down in Indian Brook, with all the parking issues they had over the last several months. We had, unfortunately, we had to close down the parking for the marsh because people were just parking all over place that road. So a lot of local residents are a little concerned that they can't go down to the marsh now and no place to park and actually use it. So I don't know how we can get work around that right now. Unfortunately, it's just now. We're hoping as things calm down here in the fall, late fall, that we won't get as many visitors as we had. But that didn't seem to be the case this past weekend. It was pretty, pretty crowded as everyone could see. Our proposed budget for two, next year is going to be $11.3 million. We're under the 2% cap. Our zoning and conversation, conversation planning boards are all meeting via Zoom. We've had many public hearings over Zoom so far, and they've been working out fairly well. I don't know when we're going back to person for these particular meetings that hasn't come up yet. But we've been having our town board meetings in, in public lately. And we had a couple of meetings this past week on our budget hearings and so forth like that. As you already know, Roberto Miller Muller is be stepping down from the Climate Smart Community Advisor. So if anyone's interested in that position, please contact our town clerk. You know, Roberto's been doing this for quite some time now. He's done a great job. I know he always, you know, he helps the village out as well in that capacity. So he's going to be surely missed, but I'm sure we'll find someone to replace him. We had a big meeting last this past Wednesday, last Wednesday with the owners of the Garrison Golf Course and Country Club. As you know, they're giving, looking to give over this property to the Shakespeare to run. They're breaking this property into four separate parcels, 92 acres of the Garrison Golf Club, 53 acres for the Shakespeare Festival, 27 acres, they call it challenging parcel on Route 9. I think that's a part, pieces of property as you drive by on Route 9 here, that's the acreage up there, 27, and 28 acres for private property. But we're looking very, looking very, we're very excited about this. We approved the resolution today so they can go move forward with their planning board. And it's on the planning board's agenda for next Thursday evening. We paved the last 1100 feet of dirt road on East Mountain Road South. Also, we're looking for as few people who may be interested in the cemetery committee. We lost a few members, a few people moved away. So if anyone's interested in being on that committee, contacted our town clerk as well. But you mentioned, I think Larry's back now, but I believe that Larry, the fire was up at Glassbury Court in the woods. Is that correct?
It was down just north of the Garrison Golf Club on the west, on the east side. Yeah, we just finished up about an hour ago.
Yeah. So that's where it is. Also, too, I sent a couple of pictures to Fran about the, you know, you were looking about how they park other locations. I was in Nyack a few weeks ago. Instead of putting a big X across people's driveways, they just put out two lines. Looked, pretty nice compared to putting a big X on someone's driveway. I know you were looking about doing that up on High Street or some areas in the, in the village about how all the towns do it. So I thought Fran's got that information. We also, too, our building department's been real busy. Brought in over $100,000 this past month. So unbelievable amount of money to bring in for our building department. That's such a record as well. And I just like to thank all the veterans and have a great Veterans Day for all those veterans out there. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thanks, Bob. Bob, question, I, I saw the Franken pine that was installed up on Vineyard Road. And, and they, the pole is silver. So like, I, I would have thought that that would have been.
Oh, you're talking about.
Rust or something.
Franken pine.
Okay, yeah, I took a picture and looked, I didn't really look at the pole. Is it silver? I didn't notice it, tell you the truth, Dave. I did take a picture of it. I was literally looking at the, I guess you would call the leaves or whatever you want to call it. It looked pretty nice to me. But I didn't notice that the pole was silver, really.
It's galvanized. I think they painted it brown.
That's what it is, yeah. Yeah, that's a little strange. I agree with you on that.
Looks like shit no matter what they do to it.
Well, I would have maybe not noticed it as much if it wasn't reflecting light out of.
Did you, did you drive up there and see it?
No, I saw, you can see it off of, if you're heading south.
That far from Route 9?
Yeah.
Yeah, wow.
Traffic light, yeah.
Wow, okay. I'll take a look at that. Yeah. Good. Thanks for bringing that to my attention.
I would have.
I don't know what I could do about it now. Maybe get a painting. That's about it.
I know the one down in, down towards Peekskill is, you know, it's brown.
Brownish, correct. That is brown, that one.
Probably, but yeah, anyway. All right. Thanks, Bob.
All right.
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Bob.
Stirk, Fire Company, Steve?
Yeah, there's a report here. 21 alarms for October. And their self-contained breathing apparatus, or the SCBA flow testing is scheduled for Friday, November 6. And they are currently reviewing specifications and pricing for the new engine that they want, or need, rather.
And that is required, required to have.
They are.
Thank you. TAB, Jen still with us?
Yes, I'm here. I didn't huff off or anything.
Hi, Jen.
I don't, I have a really short report. Actually, I don't have any report since I last spoke with you on October 6th and on October 13th. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
At your meeting. The only small update is that the, the removals for the, the RFP for removals that you approved is almost finished by the, completed by the contractor. He has one more tree to do. And I did, and other members of the board spend a lot of hours in these last few weeks replying to many emails and meeting in person with people on the street and replying to letters to the editor, et cetera, et cetera, to try and help the public understand that we did not make a light decision to take down the trees that needed to be taken down. And we are in the process of revising the other RFP to send it back out again. I didn't know if you guys had any questions about that, but the, that's the main work that we're working on.
I just think you're in a no-win situation to thank you for your, for working with everyone on that. Either people want the trees down and it's a threat constantly, or you take them down and you're, you don't care and you're just taking them down because at, at your whim, I guess, but I, dealing with the public sometimes isn't that easy. So thank you.
It was, I will say, since this is on the record, that it's, it was actually kind of heartening that there were a lot of people alarmed about it. And I would have been upset and worried if nobody had said anything because it just means we have a lot of people that care about trees in our community, which you guys already all know. So that was good. And I'm not making this as a public comment as a citizen, but as the, the tree board chairperson, I'd like to understand a little bit more based on your discussion with the HDRB about their value and about my, our board's bottom line also. I'm a little bit concerned. I know that you guys don't seem like you all agree, but our boards, my boards and their boards and all of our boards' value to the village is much more than our, the fees that we bring in. And I know that Marie, I, Marie, I really respect the way that you have sort of your laser focus on, you know, financial responsibility. And I think that that is very valuable to our small village. But I hope that all of you will understand that we save you a lot of money. I personally, just, just my board, as you know, have brought in grant money and also have saved you taxpayer money that you would have had to use to take down those trees, for example. And so I would really caution you guys in getting into like a, sort of, I don't know what the financial term is, but making sure the boards are in the black or the red and, and how, you know, you should be responsible about it. But it seems really alarming to me when you're just valuing boards' work based on that bottom line. And that, that, I hope if there is some decision or about the HDRB that you guys will communicate that with the other boards about how you're valuing our work so that I can make it clear to you how much money I'm saving. And I don't have to have that sort of conversation with you if somebody sues about a tree sometime in the future. And that's all. And also, I appreciate all of your work and thank you for making me make the public comment at the end. And I will if I, as a citizen later, but that was just as a chairperson. So thank you.
Jen, I thought your response to one of the papers about the treason question on Parrot Street was really, really good. Thank you.
I wanted to concur with Marie on that, Jen. I, I read all the, all the responses that you gave and just about anywhere I could find it. And also was watching what was happening on Parrot Street as they were taking those, those trees down. And really, they were, they really needed to come down. There's, you know, take a look at, at the sawed-off trunks and you could tell that they were a danger. So, you know, you didn't need a, a tree expert with that point to.
Thank you.
Figure it out.
The point is, thank you, Lynn, but the point is also that we did, we did have multiple experts.
Absolutely.
Evaluate them. And I would never, like, that, that it wasn't just my opinion or the board's opinion. And we tried everything else we could for many years. For Parrot Street, I feel as sad, or if not more sad. I've been trying to keep those trees for so long and fighting against this and fighting against this, and it just caught up with us. They just declined too much and we can't ignore the experts, multiple experts' opinions. So that's what, what had to happen.
Well, I think people need to remember that trees don't last forever and neither do people live forever. So, you know, trees have a nor, a natural lifespan. And sometimes they come to the end of it and have to come down or fall.
Yeah. On Parrot Street, it was unfortunate because all of those trees were, were planted around the same time. That's not unfortunate, but they were all the same kind of tree and they all reached this, you know, in the last four or five years, they've been all declining around the same time. So that's why we had to do that there. But I'm looking forward to trying to raise money and beg other people to donate money to get more. We've already planted five trees on that street, but also just to replace all these trees we have, that's a major priority of our board. And I try to make that clear. Anyway, I don't want to take up more time about this.
Jen, just, I just want to say one thing.
Sure.
I don't think anybody on this board is questioning the value of all the volunteers and all the committees that we have. And there was never any, any idea of saying anything like that. We're not questioning the value. We know the value of all the volunteers that come at all of our boards. Um, the fact that we're trying to add two and two and get four has nothing to do with the fact that we're questioning any value of any boards. And when we're not saying that you have to, you know, raise enough money to handle, we know what we're doing. And it was never, never an issue. And so I didn't want anybody to walk away thinking that we're questioning, you know, the tremendous amount of hours and time that all of the volunteers and all of our boards are doing. We're not questioning that at all. We appreciate it. And I think you all know how much we appreciate it. So, and I don't want to come up with a sour note.
Thank you. No, I, I understand that, Fran. And you guys all know me well enough now to understand that I really also appreciate how much work and thought you guys put into this. But I know from my experience with trees, trees can be viewed, for example, as a, by some people as a very expensive liability, you know, ongoing maintenance, et cetera, et cetera. And it was only when they had formulas that monetized the actual financial value of trees to res, village residents, to property values, to sort of public values, that people started actually understanding and, and being able to write these ordinances to protect trees or to, you know, put the money into them that, that we, that is equal to the value we get out of them or whatever you want to call it. And sometimes I do feel like, I was the one on the forum the other day, whoever said that earlier, that asked a question about encouraging volunteerism in the village. And I, I'm really concerned about it. I, I'm concerned about so many new residents coming in and not understanding how the village works and not stepping up to volunteer. And how can we get more people to volunteer? And I hope that like the, you know, the village itself can, can sort of generate more sort of, I don't know, not, not just thank you luncheons or something, but more ways or more pathways for people to, to, to do that. Because it's a lot of time, as you guys know, because you do it, you're basically volunteers, too. And, you know, we all have other jobs and we all bring it, we literally save the village money by doing this work for free. But if we're worried about, well, we can't, should we, should I call Dave to call the attorney? Or is that going to be a red flag? And then they're not going to give our board any attention anymore? They're going to, you know, that, that's going to, that's like problematic. It, you, you, we are the village. The tree board is the village and the HDRB is the village. And the planning board is the village. We're all in this together. And so the, the attorney fees should be, you know, the village board of trustees issue. You guys decide who uses the attorney and how much, et cetera, et cetera, and not an issue, a certain existential issue for our boards. That's all I mean. But I understand Fran, what you're saying, and I appreciate it. I know all of you feel the same similarly. So I just wanted to make sure that, I don't know, that I wasn't, that all of us aren't going to get judged by this from, from now on because that would be really alarming to me. And anyway, this is too much time for me. So let me go and thank you. You have a lot of stuff to do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Jen. Nothing from the chamber. Is there? Jeff, are you still on?
Yeah. He's there.
Hey, Jeff?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, I just wanted, when is the, the chamber, when are they continuing with their bathrooms? Do you know? Is there a cutoff date? We have to.
I have to look at decreeing a job. It might have been this past weekend or the upcoming weekend.
Okay. Cause I think we'll have to winter. Well, I guess there's heat in there so we could keep that going, but. All right, thanks. Matt, you're, you still there?
Yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
Time for dinner anyway.
Well, not too much to report. I'll try and keep it short and sweet. But yeah, reservoirs doing a little bit better than they were this time last year, although the flow in the month of October has increased significantly. I think that was due to the two leaks that were discovered recently. Butterfield having a couple more units occupied throughout the year, people staying home due to COVID. So I think that's pretty much why we're seeing the drastic increase from last year's October rates to this year's rates. But everything came back good for the bacteriological monthly sampling done. We did have an issue with the flow meter on the filter unit number two up at the water plant. Turned out to be part of the flow metering device and orifice plate. So we ordered that up and got that installed November 4th. So we're back online with all three units. That's good. We did assist the highway department with the repair, the water shut off at Mayor's Park. That was done on the 19th of October. So we were able to winterize that, or Bugsy was able to winterize that better than he was last year. The Hock Equipment Servicing Contract, the second onsite visit took place on October 22nd. They took care of all the tibeter meters, so everything's in good standing there. We had an emergency with the air compressors that control the valves. So we had to call all air in on the 23rd, but they replaced the lead pressure switch and got us back up and running relatively soon. No moving forward with the sending out of the manual order quality report, just basically because I say it during the monthly report and then get sidetracked with other things come tomorrow or the next day and then kind of put it on a back shelf and do a better job of trying to get that out sooner than later. No update on the Catskill DEP project since the surveying was done and the emailing bar did back in May. But I don't think anybody's really gotten any information from them recently. That does it for the water side of things, the wastewater side of things. The plant's doing good. Averaging about 184,000 a day. The BOD TSS removals have been good. The big thing that came out of the last month was the request for the missing infiltration and intrusion reports from 2016 forward. So I've been in touch with Ms. Menora Begum from D E C, telling her that I'm generating a recap letter I sent in with the monthly report. So you guys want to look at it, see if there's anything that I've missed from the records that were left behind. But the last one I could find was from 2014. But uh, the last one I could find was from 2014. So, kind of trying to get it all inclusive and get it out to them before they uh try to follow up with any sort of legal action uh for missing that and the inclusion with the speedies permit every year. Uh, but yeah, I have a pretty good, a lot of information on that. So I just want to make sure I have everything before I send it in. And then the only other thing wastewater side would be the Campbell pump station. Uh, pump number one became clogged. So we're trying to get uh Talon Industries out there to clean out the pump and install the remaining check valve that wasn't done last year uh when we had all the other valving and pipe work done down there. But other than that, that's all I really got.
So, so Steve, do we have, or Matt, do we have any update from that guy that was hired?
Uh, which guy?
Oh, no, he's not done with the review yet, I guess. So, I'm waiting to hear from Bart. He and Bart have been going back and forth. We have a guy that uh is expert in dealing with the D E P.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if you're aware of that or uh, I thought I talked to you about it, but uh, anyway, he's helped New Pulse a lot with their water.
Okay.
Dealing with the D E P. So, him and Bart are previous engineer.
Right.
Are ironing some stuff out and he's going to give us his advice uh at some point in the very near future.
Okay.
I, I did ask, uh, did ask Matt today if we could get a meter on the visitor center, if that's possible. I, I want to see what the water is that we're using there on weekends especially. You know, uh, I can't imagine if you have hundreds of people in line using the bathroom with three gallons or three and a half of flush uh that it's not insignificant. So I, I think we need that information. So, we can add that to um, some of the negative impacts from uh visitors.
Yeah.
Hey Jeff, can you notify, I don't know if Fran is still on. Can you let her know that the restrooms at Mayor's Park are shut down now?
Okay. Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
No problem.
Hey Matt, thanks.
Okay, uh, for building department. Let's see, uh, where are we? Okay, um, building department, new building permits, nine. Building permits issued, six. Uh, dumpster permits issued, one. C D Os issued eleven. Uh, record searches completed, four complaints received. Oh, is Charlotte on? Sorry. Okay, I know she asked and uh when it was, that was last week. Um, complaints received, four. Um, referrals generated, H G R B two and Z B A two. Um, fees, uh, applications, uh, application and permit fees collected, four thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars. Record search fees collected, three hundred dollars and other fees thirty for a total for October of five thousand two hundred and eighteen dollar. Thank you, Charlotte. Next, we have uh highway. Is Bugsy on?
Yes.
Bugsy, get unmute. You mute.
Can you hear me now?
Got you.
Yes.
Okay. How's everyone doing this evening?
Good.
Lovely.
Okay, uh, let's see. For the month of October, garbage, we had forty-three and a half tons. Recycling, we had almost twenty-eight tons. Let's see, for the month of October, we finished a small section of pavers on Campbell Avenue. We filled in an old telephone pole hole on Main Street with some extra concrete. From a sidewalk, we poured close to it. We hauled uh thirty-two point three eight tons of concrete to West Hook Sand and Gravel. We had two brush collections that were hauled to West Hook as well. We assisted the water department in replacing the service shut off for Mayor's Park Pavilion. Repaired a broken section of fence at the riverfront. Filled a ocean hole over on Bank Street, dug out and prepped area in front of Kismet's and the French restaurant for paver placement. Uh, we hauled one load of scrap to the scrap yard. We winterized Mayor's Park Pavilion bathrooms. Uh, repaired six feet of curb and pulled and poured twenty-six foot of sidewalk on Cross Street. Um, as far as vehicle side goes, we replaced the battery wipers in the ninety-seven F three fifty and also the wipers in the two thousand sixteen. We also got a new uh battery for the motor for our leaf sucking truck. Um, we did have an issue with uh nineteen eighty-eight Salter, just trying to get that up and ready for the coming season. Um, we had a little issue with the dryer motor. We had to bypass that. Um, and we've got the, we got the eighty-nine, eighty-eight International Salter up and ready to go for the winter. Um, and for the month of November, we will be finishing the pavers on Main Street for the T E A B. Clearing the leaves around the village and getting ready for the coming winter.
Let's see, the uh concrete removal, is it, is it worth, I don't know how many trips that is or how many, um, oh, you have fourteen loads. That's, that's fourteen trips and we're bringing that to West Hook. Does it make, I, how much are the, is the truck? I mean, how many yards or ton is the truck holding? And it would be, would be advantageous to have a dumpster there instead and have someone pull that away?
Um, the dumpster, it's, it's just a matter of over time when we get time to get down there and just pull some out. I am meeting with the uh county hopefully in the next day or two to discuss the reeds going up before uh Thanksgiving. Um, I want to speak with them about honoring an old agreement that only a couple of us remember. As in, they would help us remove that pile, which would be a lot more advantageous to us.
Okay. Um, if you uh would like, I would sit in on that meeting with you if you'd like, if up to you, but uh maybe a little more.
Uh, yes, I, I would like that.
Okay. Just let me know whenever. I'll be glad to do that. So back to the uh, the concrete haul though, if
Okay, I will.
Is it worth uh having a dumpster or no? The amount, I don't know how much do we fit in our trucks? We really don't have a big truck. So we have a lot of time traveling, seems.
Um. Yeah, we, like I said, it was fourteen trips, uh, seven with a smaller six-wheel dump truck and seven with the larger C D L required uh dump truck. Um, the larger dump truck holds probably about four and a half, five tons. Um, a smaller truck, we can get up to about two, two and a half tons. Hey. I mean, we're, we're pretty much done for the season with bringing concrete up there. This was just stuff we started pulling out of that pile, trying to make room to put leaves if we had to. Um, just something to get us through this season until we can wrap our heads around our little problem of a place for it to go. So, I do have enough room down there to dump the leaves from the sucker truck, which is, I can fill that up about three times a day.
Okay. So we'll, we'll meet with those guys if they, if they're not willing to help or whatever. I think we, we just have to bite the bullet and get rid of that pile. Uh, cause it's ideal for the brush, I think. And uh, at least the whole lot or whatever. So, we'll see how the, see how the county meet goes.
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll see what the county still doesn't go from there.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, justice court, uh fines forfeited, bales and civil penalties, eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-five dollars. Parking ticket, six thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. Um, let's see, civil fees, a hundred and fifty-five dollars, mandatory state surcharges, forty or forty. And the total is nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. This is the number that uh Jeff was referring to earlier. I'm not going to go through the other stuff. We never do. Um, let's see. Let's switch back here. So, um, report of the mayor and board of trustees. Do we have anyone?
Um, I just would like to say, as, as um, David given us some municipalities to commit, to contact regarding uh various parking permit systems in their municipalities. In the process of doing that, I ran across a, a company called, uh, it was called Passports, Passport Incorporated. Uh, and they were in Rye, I believe. It's a company, it's an app company that um takes care of the uh parking fees instead of having meters around, takes care of parking fees, also does permits and a whole bunch of other things. So Marie and I had a, a Zoom conversation with uh a representative from Passports Incorporated uh last week. Um, they, you know, talked about the numbers of tickets we have, uh, so on, so forth. Um, we may be too small municipality for them. It's pretty much a straight app system. Uh, they make their money off of a small piece of every uh tick, uh, every use of the system, right, Marie?
Reuse of the app, yeah, every, every time somebody parks.
So we may be, but they're going to come up with a pricing system for us. It's, it's strictly an app. Um, so if, you know, if you don't have a, a iPhone or an app or something or a cellphone, smartphone, it would not work for you. But it was something to look into because what was nice about it is that you could, you could grow it throughout the village. So if we started out using it for parking, say at Mayor's Park or along Fair Street, and then decided we wanted to put um uh meters of some sort or other on Main Street, we could just add that to the system and people can use the same, you know, we'd have the same app and so on and so forth. If we decided we wanted to have a permit system in the village, that could be added to it. Um, so it was a nice system to look at. We haven't heard back from them yet. But um, it, it was just an interest.
Adding to what Fran says, that this particular system does not require a parking meter. You can just download the app onto your phone and sign up for space via yours, your either your space or your um license plate number. So it would eliminate the capital investment of mark metering, metering on Main Street, which would be hugely advantageous. And the same thing with Mayor's Park would be hugely advantageous.
They would also
You have markings or Oh, you, you have to signage and numbers or whatever for where you're parking?
We'll have, you'd have to have signage for where you're parking, saying that the only way you could use the parking is if you download the app and then on the app, enter your license plate number.
All right.
And they provide this signage throughout the village, as many as we need. And they have determined that you need X amount of signs per block or so on and so forth. And the village could be zoned. So, zone one could be, you know, one end of Main Street or one side of Main Street and so on and so forth. The system, if we, if it grows, if we also, you know, wanted to get really um, at, you know, interested in it, um, it would also, it could also handle doing tickets, doing parking tickets and so on and so forth. Uh, it's an interesting system. It can grow as much as we wanted to or not. Um, the question that we're waiting for is, do they think that we're a big enough municipality for them to even bother to get involved with us? Because they make their money. Basically, we don't pay them anything for it. They make their money out of the, the um parking. It's, you know,
What's the name of it again?
Passport, um, I'm sorry, Passport Incorporated. I believe it's from Rye. Rye is where I saw it. But
They, the guy we talked to was in North Carolina, in Char- in Charlotte.
Right.
Yeah, when I was doing some research, I saw a, a number of those. Uh, they, they use them a, well, not a lot, but I the, one of the examples they showed were from colleges. It seems like they use them in colleges a lot.
Right, yes.
There were a number down south too. I didn't see anything north, but.
So it's something, something to consider.
Yeah, definitely. Okay. Anyone else?
All I have.
Uh, I just wanted to uh say a thank you and uh this is the last, last uh monthly meeting for Stephen Lynn. So, we have a, uh, maybe this is our huge audience. I don't know what we have out there, but um, and I'm sure I will bid you upon farewell um at the last meeting. But I do, did want to say it at our monthly meeting, um, that I definitely miss you guys. Um, it's been, been a pleasure working with you. Um, I know, um, the advantage like that I being semi-retired and uh Marie and Fran being retired is we could put a lot more time in and you guys are balancing a lot of work and family and craziness that goes on. Um, so, um, I appreciate even more how much time you were able to give us. And uh, I, you know, always felt comfortable um with your opinions and I don't think we agreed on, you know, all the time. But I, I think that it was a, uh, I think we had a great board and uh it started, you know, uh, we might forget about it. But it was kind of a, not a great era uh in the village, as far as I'm concerned. And uh, you guys stepped up. And uh, I think Steve was in the hospital with a kidney stone, right?
Yeah.
We were looking
This is slightly better than that. Yeah, the board.
And I had no idea who Steve was. Um, we were looking for another candidate to run and I heard that, yeah, we have Stevie's and, you know, in the hospital, he said, yeah, count me in.
He was high on drugs at the time.
It's the only regret he has in his life. High on that. But uh, thank you guys so much. It really has been a pleasure. Lynn, always uh your expertise and uh, and you know, and helping us with like uh filming and also with uh food services. Um, it was incredibly helpful. I think you did a great job on the film uh code that we have. And Steve, uh, you know, I've just, just the one job, the one, the roofing job probably saved the village forty, fifty thousand dollars. So uh, as Jen pointed out before, um, we're not really, we're kind of volunteers here and uh that was a huge savings. And uh, when there's a construction question there, I, I always look to Steve for his advice and uh his thoughts on it. So, um, I can't tell you how much. It's been a real pleasure and thank you so much, you guys. Really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
You'll be, you'll be definitely missed, both of you.
Truly been an honor to work with you guys. It really has. It's been one of the, it's been really interesting. It's not something I ever thought I would do. And I'm glad it was with you guys. Cause you, you people are very professional. And uh, you know, you laugh at my jokes, so.
Thanks, Steve.
Uh, it's great. And you know, the community connectedness that comes from doing this work is just is, has, has just been really eye-opening for me. And I really, really appreciate the fact that people gave me this job and it, I, I've enjoyed every minute of it. So, thanks.
You'll be missed.
Come on, Lynn.
We'll be around. Well, okay, not every minute, but you know. But I've enjoyed it a lot. And you know, I, I encourage everybody, everybody listening to, to contribute in some way to their, i- in any way they can to their community. Because just getting to know how government actually works from the inside has been a real eye-opener. And it's, and it, you know, I think it's important that people know that, know how government actually works. Um, and so I've really appreciated this opportunity too. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn.
Okay, uh, continuing on then. Uh, we have uh new business authorizing mayor to sign service fee agreement with uh Penn Flex. This is the LoSAP program. Do we have any discussion? I will, I will, well, somebody else has to kind of, I guess, make the motion sound better.
I, I looked into it and uh, as I said, I wanted to and uh, yeah, apparently it's, it's really great for small communities that can't really afford to uh, you know, to do all the updates that need to be done in order to, you know, meet the, the needs of, of uh, the requirements that like governments are are, are making us all be responsible for. So, it's, it's really good. Uh, it, it's a
It's good for our What's that?
You're, you're on Lexapro. We're up at the LoSAP thing.
Oh, on LoSAP, boy. I thought you said Lexapro.
That's okay, Steve.
Yeah. Sorry, I got senioritis. You know what I mean?
So I make a motion.
I want to go on spring break. I gotta get out of here.
I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the service agreement with Penn Flex.
I'll second that.
Hold on, favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is authorize uh mayor to sign agreement uh for prosecuting attorney A Gill. Is that Andrew? I don't remember.
Andres.
Do I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the agreement with Andrew Gill to be the prosecuting attorney?
A second?
Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, the new business request to use Pavilion for Narcan training on November 21st. I will make a motion to.
It is, I, I think that this is not the Pavilion. I think this is the bandstand.
It is, Jeff, it is a, I asked Jeff and he said it's the bandstand they want at the riverfront.
That's Maria O'Connor from the Prevention Council is actually on the call.
I am, I'm here. It's Maria O'Connor. I do work for the Prevention Council of Putnam. We are partnering with the Phillips Town Hub as well as St. Christopher's Inn. We're trying to locally push out Narcan as much as we can ahead of the holidays, knowing historically that this is the time of year that we see lots of suicides, opioid overdoses, and knowing that Narcan is a direct, you know, could be a direct positive impact to the community. So we were hoping to, and I guess I do mean the bandstand at the waterfront. But of course, you know, we want to be very sensitive to COVID. We want to be very sensitive to the numbers rising in the county. We at the Prevention Council have been ultra, you know, conservative with being out there in the community. And we certainly don't want to encourage any unsafe behavior. So we're just looking to see if this is a possibility. You know, we're, we're working on the end of the year here with very few probably great weekends like we've had this past weekend. Had we know this past weekend would have been seventy-one degrees, seventy-three degrees, we would have pressed for this a lot sooner. But we are requesting the Saturday, November 21st, it would be a two hour event. We would have our National Guardsmen partners with us who would be actually doing the trainings to, you know, this could be anyone popping by. We would be very respectful, of course, with social distancing and mask wearing. And in addition to the Narcan and the individuals who would receive the kits, you know, doing the onsite trainings, we do have de-terror drug deactivation kits that we would offer to the public as well as free masks and possibly hot cocoa. So I don't know if that, this is something that, you know, you folks would consider doing at this point. And if not, certainly we'd like to, you know, revisit this maybe in the spring.
How are, how are people attending this? Is it anybody who would walk up or do people reserve spaces to participate in it?
No, it would be basically a walk by. That's the, the beauty of a pop-up event. We did one recently in the Village of Brewster. We, we had about twelve people who were actually trained and given Narcan kits at the time. We did advertise, you know, throughout the village there. We did a lot of social media outreach. I know the Phillips Town Hub has their, you know, pulse on the, on the heartbeat of the village. So I'm sure that they would push out some advertising on their social media and within it, within their constituents. But basically, it's anybody who would want to walk up. We focused in the Village of Brewster on the bilingual population there. But that doesn't necessarily have to be the focus for this, for this event. It's more of a community event acknowledging the fact that, you know, this is the holiday season and we want to keep people safe.
Okay, so how many people would be on the bench then? Just, just a few?
We have two National Guardsmen. Both Danielle Pack McCarthy and myself might have a resource table where we would have some, you know, palm cards and information about our treatment providers in the area. The de-terror deactivation bags, but I would say on the Pavilion itself would be whomever would be training, which would be, you know, could be two, three, four, five people at a time. I, I'm not quite familiar with the size of the bandstand there, so I don't know. But obviously we would be very respectful of six feet distances and mask wearing and all that.
Excuse me, I didn't realize at the time when Marie handed this in, that that's the same date that they plan on decorating the bandstand for Christmas, according to Ruth's report.
Yeah.
Marie, could you talk to Danielle Pack McCarthy and, and see about using the Pavilion? Maybe it's not as, I don't know, maybe it would be better at the bandstand because of, you know, it's right there in the open and more people will see you. But that is one option, or Sunday, maybe?
Okay. As long as I know that we have permission moving forward, I can, you know, we can try to arrange for a different time or location for sure. I don't know where the Pavilion is. Maybe is that at a park in Cold Spring or?
Yeah, it's in a park north, just north of our Main Street. And there's, well, there's a ball field and everything. And then there's a Pavilion that it's a, it's, it's a larger area. And there's parking, ample parking there that we can block off for you. But if you need more, you know, visual from people or whatever, maybe the bandstands better. So that's why maybe talk to Danielle, Danielle, and ask her, which is better. But I, I think, well, I'll speak for myself. I'm, you know, willing to allow it. I mean, I think it's a good thing to do. So is everyone else kind of?
Okay. Yeah, I think parking at, at the riverfront would be a challenge on a Saturday.
We could block off that also, though, right? Cone that off?
Could do that.
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to. I agree. I think we'd have to cone it off.
Yeah, but.
Our original thought was to engage foot traffic. So I'm not really, I'm not familiar enough to be able to tell you guys, of course, I'm sure it would be, if there is foot traffic in the area of the Pavilion that you're speaking of.
Oh, yeah, there's foot traffic.
So, I mean, then.
The end of, the end of November, there may not be.
Not so much. Yeah.
Well, there'd be less probably, or do you think, well. I think Danielle knows enough. She can decide whichever. There's a lot of hikers going by there now, so you'd have thousands. But by the end of the month, if it's really cold or another week or so, maybe that might be different. I don't know how many people will be walking around the bandstand either, though.
The good thing about the Pavilion is it's enclosed or it's covered so that if the weather is bad, you'll be underneath.
Well, that's a great point, Fran. Thank you. Okay, well, as long as we have your permission, we'll, we'll forge forward, knowing that the, just the twenty-first would not be a workable date.
Okay, you just have, just please come back with us with the date and stuff and then we'll make an official, you know, you know, make it official. The time and, time and date would be great. And then we'll approve.
And thank you so much for adding me to tonight's agenda. I know that was very last minute, so I'm very appreciative of that. Thank you.
Problem. Thank you for your work. Now we have old business Steve. Request.
I don't want to do it anymore.
So anyway, make believe it is. Request the higher Lexpool. And Steve has done some research on this.
I did. I looked into it a little bit. I just wanted to see if they were one of Cuomo's major campaign contributors and they're not. Okay, sure. That's how my mind works. I used to be a journalist, so that's just how it is. I gotta look these things up. But no, it's actually, according to what I was reading, it's an excellent organization, no, company to hire for a smaller village that doesn't have the, you know, the money and the firepower to, to draft all these policies and have them for their own. They're, you know, they're just there and you can use them as you need to. So it's really probably, well, it's definitely way cheaper than going through all these policies on your own as a village. So, but the only negative thing about it, which really doesn't affect us, but it's a, it's a private company and they're affecting. You know, how laws are made within communities and there is no community oversight of these companies. So that's, that was one of the only complaints that I came across when I was reading about it. So, you know, basically, it's, it's, they're kind of privatizing law enforcement laws or policies without, you know, the oversight of elected officials and things like that. So, but that was the only rap on them I could really find. And that does kind of make sense that if everyone starts using these policies as though they're, you know, they've been approved by legislatures and such. It's not, that's not actually how it works. So.
In our, with, with the review, it'd be, the public's gonna have, I mean, we'll work off of what they give us, but they're not, they're not saying this is what it is.
Right. Well, that's why it's good for us, because it's a, it's like, you know, it's like Cliff Notes or whatever, you know. We don't have to have all these policies that we've created for ourselves. They're already there and then we can, you know, Larry can use them and we can use them as we need to. So.
Right.
But anyway, that's it.
Did anybody else look into them?
I did previously. And I had, I had found that, you know, they've been very helpful throughout New York State and they're very active. And sometimes it's good to get people other than politicians looking over laws the politicians are trying to make. So this way we get an outside view of things. It may be good, it may not be good, you know. But, but I, no, I found them, you know, any of the municipalities that use them rave about them. So I had no issues with them.
Are you familiar with them at all, Larry?
That's the reason I brought him, I brought him up to, to you guys was I researched him through other police departments, Kent, Billy Fishkill, Ponton County Sheriff, and they all swore by them. They thought they were excellent for the resources that they, they provided.
Oh, cool.
Okay, so with that, I will make a motion to, to hire Lexa Pool for the updating of the Coast from Police Department policies.
Second.
Any further comments or all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go everywhere.
Get some sleep.
I'm dragging, believe me.
Are you working tonight?
No, no, no. I did enough down at the fire for the last four hours.
All right. Well, thank you for that also.
Yeah.
Another volunteer. Oh, there was one other person that I wanted to thank tonight that will be losing. Well, it's his last week was last week was, was Nico. I'm sure he's probably not listening in, but if you want to hire somebody and get your money's worth, it's Nico. It's a pleasure to work with. He just worked with him one day doing the, doing the Mayor's Park parking thing for a little bit. And I just talking to him anytime. He's just like a great person. And he just goes out there and does his thing. And I could, I could use a million of him. It's incredible. So wherever he is, thank you. Hopefully it could get you back next year, Nico.
Yes. Thanks, Nico.
Do we have public comment?
Kathleen Foley is raising her hand.
Hi, I just want to clarify that last motion you made. Your, the, the motion you made was hiring Lexa Pool for the update. But I don't, I don't think that's what you're hiring Lexa Pool for, right? I think you're hiring Lexa Pool to provide a model ordinance from which you, the legislative body, will, will work and, and open for public comment. They are not taking over the process. They are providing you with the model ordinance. That's the product you're purchasing, right?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure it's clear in the record because that exchange.
Okay, so what I'd like to make really, really, really clear, and I almost threw my first F-bomb out there is this board is not going to ignore public comment. We are gonna have plenty of public meetings, whatever's needed. So everyone can have their say and input into a policy. You need a baseline. That's what we're doing. We're getting a baseline. We don't have a policy. We basically work off of New York State. So anyone out there, please understand this really, really clearly. We are not going to do an end around the public. We are going to have a meeting. We will invite people from, you know, whoever would like to come, if we want to go to churches and, and other organizations, that's fine. I think that's more essential to, for the reason for this for bigger cities, because they have more of their fingers on the pulse of their community than here. But I'm all for whatever, whatever organization you'd like to bring in here to, you know, help make a good policy that we can work with. That's what we'll do. So please, please, please understand, we are not doing an end around and that we are, this is a baseline. It'll be something to work off of. You can't go with a blank paper and have a free for all at a meeting and say, okay, what do you think we need? Should we have two police on duty? Should we have no police? How much should we pay the police? What do they do when they see someone that's, you know, in need of some mental assistance or, you know, and just throw stuff out there? So this will be a baseline. It'll be a, a policy that we can work off of and that will probably have everything that we need and we can tweak it the way we want to tweak it. And if I'm missing, you know, interpreting this, Larry, please jump in. But I keep kind of hearing this or getting this feeling from people that we're trying to do some, or we're not going to really abide by the governor's rules. And that's not the case.
No, really, realistically, realistically, the governor's rules is a guideline. We, I have a three hundred page book that he sent out to every police department in the state. And I've gone over this specifically with the, with going over to the meetings in, over in Carmel, rural police, the police departments. It is a guideline, basically a guideline. It gives you what you could do, what you, you might do. It's ultimately up to the municipality, no matter which it is, whether it's Kent, Cold Spring, in our sense, it's going to be Cold Spring. We will have input from everybody. It just guides, gives you a guideline to meet with, say, clergy, to meet with other groups, any groups that might be in your village, town or municipality. And that's what we're going to do. As soon as we get the, the rules and regulations, kind of like on a little, like you said, just a base start of it, we're gonna invite everybody in. I want to meet with whoever wants to meet with myself and the village board and, and, you know, and, and talk over whatever their, their, their thoughts are, what their fears might be, what they, they, you know, what they like and they don't like. So we'll get an input from everybody before we will go, go forward with it. And then once we decide on the policy, it'll be, it'll be up to the board, the mayor look at to approve after we've gone through the public, all the public meetings and stuff like that. And then it gets sent up to Albany. And even Albany can't change it. They can't ask for anything else. It's pretty much what we're going to do for our, our village. And that's how I, I plan on, you know, going forward with it. I get input from anybody. Again, just come, we're gonna have meetings, come and talk to us, talk to me, email me, whatever you want to do. We're gonna have public meetings and that's how we're gonna look at it.
Dave, just for clarity, I fully understand that that's what you intend. And I think the way, the way the starting point you're choosing is really smart, working with Lexa Pool. I asked the question because, because it wasn't clear from the motion and I wanted to make sure that what you were intending is what came through. So I agree with you. I also wanted to ask a question about, I understand, and I don't know how accurate this report is. I understand that there's been some vandalism with the lights on the dock, the, the lowlights actually out on the dock, the, the downcast lights. And I'm wondering if that's the case and if they're being repaired and if we, if we know what the status is.
Anything?
I asked, I asked, I got a email from James Hartford. It wasn't the first regarding the ballards. I think that's, like ballards. And there were, I, I don't know how many. There were a few that were broken and some that weren't working. There are some things missing, but I don't, but they've been gone for a while. I think there were some flotation devices or something on the other side of the fence at the end of the dock. I asked Bugsy and he said he was gonna look into the, the lighting and seeing what's needed. I don't know if there was reports or anything to Larry.
No, I've gotten no, I've gotten the same email. He CC'd me. And I looked, I looked into any of the reports, if any of the officers took any reports for that. And they would have if it would have came over on a complaint. There were no reports of the vandalism, just the photo as you, you received. I think you had gotten, Dave. Or the email, I should say.
Right.
That's a bummer. Thanks. That's all I had.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Anyone else? Michael?
Um, nope.
Yay.
No one else.
Is there anything else from the board? I don't think it makes much sense for nine minutes to carry on with an update. So.
What, what time do we start on Thursday?
Six thirty.
Six thirty?
It's, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, all.
Hey, have a good night, everybody.
Bye.
Take care.
Good night, Larry. Go to sleep.
Thanks a lot.